All right, thank you guys. So yes, we're gathered together for this work session to talk about our upcoming budget forecast. And so the first thing, I gave you all a handout. Did everybody get one that has the budget comparison doc? If you don't have one, here's some more copies. Chase, give Lisa one there. And if you have something to write with, I think what would be helpful is the first year that starts with the red assumption about 1.5%, where it says 23, 24. Does everybody see that on there?
Yeah.
I think above that, if you write that that's going to be fall 22 enrollment. And then we're going to back up from there. So you put fall 22 enrollment. And then if you go, if you work your way left, you'll see now it's a 2.5 in green. That's fall 21 enrollment. And then the next column, you can tell is going to be fall 20 enrollment. And then fall 19 enrollment. So I just want you to have those there because I think that'd be a good point of reference for us as we talk about why the problem is, where it's at today and kind of what happened here. And so the next thing in front of us really as we come out of the pandemic is this budget situation. We knew that we've had historical underfunding from the state. We knew that ESSR dollars were going to have to roll off the system. And we also knew that we'd have to have a slight budget adjustment if we hadn't had the ESSR dollars, that we were able to basically delay it for a couple of years because of the ESSR funding into our system. The surprise in all of this is really the enrollment. I don't think that was predictable. I don't think anybody knew that. We commissioned previous enrollment projections that would have showed the district above 16,000 students relatively quickly. That's not at all where we're going to be. And so we'll talk some more about enrollment projections and some of the next steps there. But we really now have an enrollment issue that is now created a budget issue for us. And if you look here about our historical trend in the district, this gives you some good perspective on how we've been able to address budget concerns moving forward. This shows us as a growing district, right? We started in 1999, 2000 on this chart at 10,619 students. As of last year, when we published this report, 14,395 students. We've grown a lot. And that's helped our budget from the aspect that we know we're funded on a per pupil basis, almost $7,500 per student. And so anytime that number goes up for us, that's a really good thing because then we get to receive more revenue from the state, not just for that year. But as Les will tell you, that counts every single year moving forward. We get to keep counting those students moving forward, right? So it continues to generate dollars for us. So as we build our assumptions, some of the things you would have seen in the other quarterly financial reports is really assumptions around at least 135 students, not what you see in this document for this current fall at 44. What is it, 44.92 students? And so if we back that up a couple of years, you can really see where this problem is created. So if you go to the column I had you put fall 20 enrollment, you see in parentheses 287.8. That's a minus, okay? So the parentheses means that's a loss, right? And so if you take that all the way down, a couple of you had questions before the meeting about why 0.05, why so thin? Well, that's why it's so thin because as we build these budgets moving forward, we assume a number there until we have the number for that budget year. So if you look at the first red column I had you label fall 22 enrollment, we were assuming a 130, 100 at the worst there. We got a 44, okay? Well, that year that the minus 287, there's no way that we assumed a minus 287, right? The year before, we had grown 287 almost. So that's how you ended up in a budget that barely made it wash in that first year. So when I started as superintendent, so if you think about it, the 2020, 2021 school year, I was really already operating with the budget that had been built the previous spring, right, by Stephen Atmore. And so you can project that out and see, okay, well, first fall, then Matt was working with us, right? We lost 287 kids. Wow, what would we have done, right? Good thing we had ESSR dollars. Then we go to the next year, and then we had the assumption that we were able to remove, and we gained 111. So we build our budget off of that. And that's the budget year now we're in, right? We're working from this budget in the green here at the top with the 2.5%. So the enrollment's always the tricky one for us until we can figure out what that is. The other variable is supplemental state aid that we don't know. You can see for the budget picture now we're building for next year is really the work we're doing. We're trying to build next year's budget. The thing we still don't know is what SSA is going to be, right? That's why it's in red and why we've assumed 1.5% across the board because that's relatively been low. And I don't think we should, you know, try to dream up anything else there until we hear it. The enrollment now, we have the question answered. It's not where we want it to be. It's 44.92, right? But what I'm going to have Les do is eventually walk you through the rest of this document to show you, okay, what are some of the budget adjustments we need to consider then if we're going to actually make this thing work. But I think the thing we want to be clear on is just how big of a problem this enrollment situation has created the budget issue in front of us. And so you can see here our trend. And when we look at this, our AEA, Grantwood AEA is down 1,000 students. The state of Iowa is down close to 6,000 students. So and then you're going to ask, well, where are they? We don't know. I mean, the honest answer is we don't know. We think they probably left the state. It's not that private institutions like Cedar Rapids Xavier, Iowa City Regina are booming and busting at the seams. The only areas that we see traditional growth would be the Heartland AEA and Tiffin right now, SoCal Creek, Mano. We've moved from the fifth largest district to the third largest district, and we've lost students in the state or in our district, but we moved up in rankings in the state. So it's really a people problem. So when people ask you the question about why we're having to cut the budget, right? It's all of those things, historical underfunding from the state for decades long. Eventually, we have a burst, right? Two, ESSR dollars have to come out of the system. And three would be our enrollment just isn't where it is. Our enrollment's actually still 130 students less than from where we started COVID at, okay? And then people are going to say, well, what about the ESSR dollars? Why did you spend all the money on the people? Well, I don't think we do that any differently. I think our team spent a lot of time thinking, well, was that the right decision? What do we do? Well, I think somebody even said in the regular meeting, JP, I think you were talking about, we owed it to our students to spend those dollars as close to the students as we could. So of course, we know that's people. And that's the 85 cents of every dollar. We weren't going to just put it into HVAC or just into our facilities. We had some of those things already addressed and taken care of in the Facility Master Plan. So we had to spend it close to our kids. And I still think that's the right decision, even as we've looked at this. So it's really an enrollment issue. I kind of hit you with some of the statistics there about where it's growing, where it's not. Third largest district ahead of Sioux City and Davenport now. They're all going to be dealing with this issue too, right? When you look at some of those heat maps in that previous report that Les showed you, you can tell where some of their problems are going to be as well, right? I mean, they're going to have to be doing some significant budget cuts. Des Moines, our largest district in the state, has got a significant budget cut this spring too, I think upwards of $20 million. So and they're still even in a growing area, right? But it's kind of that ESSR fund conversation for them as well about trying to move those positions out. With the enrollment projections, before we get again into the details of this sheet, we think that we need new enrollment projections. So if you look at the top of the document, maybe I should get that up here and just give you a little cursor so I can click on it. So here, you see the 44.92 we were talking about. On your sheet in front of you, you see that we've assumed 75 the next two years based on some of the early data that's coming back to Adam as we talked about these. We think it's fairly safe to assume that we will see some growth the next two years. We don't know what to levels, to what level. So for right now, we've assumed something conservative around 75. But we are, once we get those projections back, we'll update that accordingly. After that, it shows no growth, slight growth, or decline, right? And so that's why you really have a zero build in here for those years. So again, I think it was Deion Richter, the old projections that would have showed us growing way over 16,000, that's not, that's not what we're seeing today. We anticipate those will be back to in December. So hopefully by September, it's at Operations Meeting. If it's not at that Operations Meeting, it'll definitely be by January. I talked to you a little bit about the Iowa City Schools Return to Learn Plan, and I just wanted you to have that information as some background again, because I think you guys will start getting questions about this, right, as we talk about reducing the budget. Remember, you can find it here on our website, the ESSR funding allocation, and where we spend all of our dollars. So these are all collapsed down. You can see COVID mitigation prevention was $2 million, technology, 5, 6, at-risk supports, $4 million. And then you see some things like SCAH start to be accounted for in that category, right? Continuity of services, $10 million. Again, you're going to see nutrition fund relief, instructional materials, additional pay for our folks, teachers, secretaries, pares. Instruction under S is a smaller number. That's more curriculum in PK 12 online. But here's a big category for us, right, 14, 5. And look at what we did there with those funds, right, to connect back to that. Here you see class size reduction in the way of elementary classroom teachers. You see summer school program. You see secondary classroom teachers, academic support teachers at both the elementary and secondary. Somebody might say, well, what about all those fellows you hired? Well, that's $1 million out of the 14, 5 there, right? The bulk of this goes in, went into our classrooms. That's why we're in a RAN 1 level right now. We wouldn't be able to do that without those ESSR funds, right? So that's going to be a hard adjustment for staff to make. But can you imagine them asking to make that adjustment two years ago, that you're going to have to be in RAN 3 through 5 with the situation we're going through? So I'm kind of painting this picture for you guys from a context perspective, right? Rather than just jumping into the numbers, it's going to be important for us to tell the story about why we're in this situation, why we got here, what are the factors leading to it, and why we have this challenge ahead of us now. Because I think that'll be the biggest thing, that people will come to us with, well, why did you do that? Why didn't you do this? What was the decision here? And then even, like I said, to avoid our budget cut previously, we provided unspent balance support at $3.7 million. So we didn't have to do this in the middle of pandemic. Who would have been able to cut a budget in the middle of a pandemic? Imagine trying to layer those on top of each other, right? So with all of that, I think it's just important for us to understand that, know that. I would say, you know, maybe one little kudos to our team. I think our HRS was a visionary aspect for us to know we aren't going to continue to have the number of people we have, so we're going to have to get better at what we do. And HRS is what's going to help us do that. That's going to create efficiency and alignment for us in our work to know we aren't going to continue to have the people that we've been accustomed to. And so that's going to be our improvement plan. That's going to be what centers us on the right work and tries to make sure we stay focused and aligned on those appropriate efforts. So with that, unless you kind of have opening questions from the context, I might just have Les walk you through the budget more than I did about what you see there in front of you, other than the enrollment and the assumptions around the unspent balance, or sorry, rather than the assumptions around enrollment and supplemental state aid that's at the top there.
Charlie? I just want to make an observation. There's a, I think the next chart you want to re-show in the enrollment report shows it certified enrollment by, as a number every year. So it's an annual change. Maybe the 1 to 4, the one you just looked at.
Not this one?
No, not this one. Oh, wait.
That was the annual change.
Sorry. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a one of them. Okay, but my observation is that if you look at this enrollment change over a 20-year period, it's remarkable because it changes so much from year to year. So if I'm trying to think about, well, what's the enrollment change going to be, change over the next five years? Chart suggests that it's going to, it's going to be small in a few years, large in a few years.
I think what we see in that chart, Charlie, is unpredictability, kind of like what you're talking about. And so we need to try to be as predictable as we can as we forecast a budget, right? And so that's why we commissioned new projections because the best thing we can do is try to get the most data around it we can to look at birth patterns and how home builds. And so I think you're right to see like, okay, you go from a 55 here to a 443. I'd love a 443 right now, right? I'd say there's a whole bunch of problems. But we got a 43, not a 443. But like you're saying, I mean, how do you build a budget based on this? And then also knowing SSA, you could say we could predict that SSA is not going to be much and that that's what we should just assume. Well, that's what we've done. But this variable is huge for us, right? And so we have to try to narrow the variance on this variable a little bit. And that's what we hope to do with the enrollment projections, to give us a better forecast of what we can expect.
Well, I think you're right. We'll, we'll need this. We definitely need this. You want that with any statement?
Yeah, and see what those tell us, right? And I think even if they are optimistic, we're still going to be cautious, knowing this is a situation.
We'll be cautious as well.
Right?
It's a good thing.
Yep.
Understanding our past is also a good thing.
All right, then I'm going to have Les just talk to you a little bit about what you see there in this budget comparison doc. And he can fill in any details that I maybe didn't explain very well or walk you through. The budget we're trying to build for the next year, Les, is where I'd like you to start, kind of in the 23, 24 with the 1.5% assumption.
Okay. And you know, Matt's covered the SSA growth of 1.5%. We believe, you know, hopefully that's conservatives. There's lots of different numbers flying out there about what could or could not be done. And so we don't want to jump on any of those wild rides and put that. And so we've taken this approach. And this has been the same percentage that you've seen in the quarterly reports for probably about the last two years. And then we just adjust it when we actually know something for the next year. You know, hopefully we'll know that by around February 15th, fall goes well in Des Moines. And with that point, I would remind you that by state law, the legislature should have already set the 23, 24 amount. So we would already have that thing, that amount fixed when we're having this discussion, if they had followed what they're supposed to do. So just aside there. But to go down, the 152 million is the control budget. That's done from the aid levy of the state aid formula. Really nothing we can change there. That's the pupil-driven amount that we get. I just collapsed that. There's a number of lines on the quarterly report that's on that unspent balance. I collapsed it there so that we have more room for some of these other factors. So it's not hiding anything there. Just to state, the preschool foundation aid and the instructional support program are kind of some big pieces there. And you can see that our preschool counts have bounced around a little bit too, especially, you know, we lost a bunch of preschool students in the pandemic. We captured some of those back the next year. Now we're down going into next year with some preschool kids. While we hear the demand, they're just not there for us to be served in our programs at this point from our October count. The miscellaneous income number, you can see that one drops from the 31.5 million to 15.3 million. That's primarily the loss of the ESSR funds. Okay, so that's, that's all of that attributes to. That miscellaneous income captures all of our title programs, Title I, Title II, Title IV, that provide a lot of those supports for students for the district. Then the next line is the unspent balance. That's just a roll forward from the prior year each year. The special ed deficit, you know, we reached just a hair under $10 million at the end of 2022. We're hopefully that we're able to control that a little bit and so just be able to take that down just a little bit each year. But knowing that that is pupil-driven as well in terms of those revenues, if the revenues aren't growing by only 1.5% and we settle at salaries at 2%, again, it's hard to collapse that gap. And so, you know, we have to follow federal and state laws with our special ed program. And so that's really a challenge to do that with our special ed program. And so that's why that's just very moderate decline. You can probably take the point of view that we shouldn't, it's not going to go down at all because of those factors, but we're going to make that effort. But not to take away services. That's not what that's indicating. The next one is just advanced funding. That is, when you have enrollment growth, you get to have the spending authority in the current year. So you approve that tonight. One of those resolutions was to approve increased enrollment. So you get the spending authority this year. We tax it back with the cash reserve levy for next year to recoup that cash. So that's why you see the next two years, we have some growth from those counts of the 75 students in those columns above, but then it goes to zeros because we're projecting zero counts. So there's going to be zero advanced funding, spending authority in those years. English as a second language. That's also what you approved tonight, or excuse me, at the last board meeting for the excess cost there. That's just an estimate, and we've kept that pretty much flat. Obviously, those services continue to be needed by our staff or by our students, and so we continue to provide those. The open enrolled out, that's really kind of an oddity one. And you can see it's only happened like twice in the last, in the eight years presented here. That is students that were not counted last year in our certified enrollment but are now open and rolled out to another district in this year. Since we have to pay another district for those funds, we get the spending authority this year through this action to account for those dollars, to make us whole in terms of our spending authority for the current year. So we don't see very many of those, and it's a state-generated number based upon our certified enrollment. And then the last one there that's continued throughout is just some environmental hazards. That's our asbestos program, radon testing. To get that spending authority back, you have to pay for those things out of the general fund. You could pay for them out of PEPAL, but then you can never recapture them. We take them out of the general fund, it's an automatic approval by the SBRC when you take it to them. You know, and you can see some of the larger numbers in the last couple of years, a couple of the big projects we've been finishing up at City and West, you know, and some of those buildings southeast that are a little bit older, that you would expect to find some of those hazards, materials are. The numbers going down is probably going to be more some of the radon testing, ongoing asbestos work. So that's why that number has dropped. And then the last one there is just the first year staffing costs. So going back to the way to the left, 1920 is the opening of Grant. The 2122 was the online program that was considered a new facility under the state programs, and so we got that additional spending authority. We're not looking at that. If we opened a new building in here as part of Facility Master Plan, that would factor in. But at this point in time, we don't have those specific plans, so we haven't accounted for anything there. Any questions thus far?
Just real quick. So the 152 million, that's the number that changes based on SSA?
Correct. Yep. And that includes the factors for like the teacher quality funds, the state's salary supplement that goes to, only to teachers per the code, our, some of the preschool funding, all the AEA support, that type of stuff all flows into that.
And I guess our enrollment numbers would impact that too.
Right. Yep. It's basically number of students times the state rates. So then we're looking down at 23, 24 adjustments. We're going to lose the 100,000, we're going to lose some funding from the 21st Century Programs that we've known about for several years, so we're factoring in that. So that's a knowing that we'll have those, we'll have that programs there. We'll have to figure out a different way to do that. But I'm going to jump down to the $3.7 million number for a minute. That is the COVID stipends that we paid for from ESSR in the last two years to all of our staff. We aren't paying those next year. Sorry, Brady. So we know that those will come out of the system, and so that's why there are a reduction of the expenditures, which is a negative number to come out of that number. The $5 million that you see there and the $3 million number there are the two numbers that we probably, is the focus of the discussion and where we want to go with you. You know, there's multiple ways to look at this over the next five years. You know, I started out giving Matt and the team information that showed about $1.5 million a year. That doesn't really get us out because so many of those costs, they stay in the system, they're in the system for the next year. And so if you don't take them out closer to the front end of that, they just continue to build, continue to accumulate to the problem or the increase in the expenditure. So the earlier that you can remove, you know, nobody's a bad thing in the organization, but any expenditure right now is kind of a bad thing, right? Because it's creating the unspent balance to go down. So any of those that we can remove, whenever you can remove those earlier in the process, it helps you as you go forward in that numbers, as they roll forward, and they don't add 2% each year to each one of those numbers. And so right now, the number that we have been working with as a team is this $8 million numbers that needs to come out of the system. And I don't know where Matt wants me to go for sure with this, if you want to take it here. But this is just one estimate. You know, Matt originally came to me and he said, I want to take all $8 million in one year. And I kind of looked at him and I kind of said, Matt, I don't think we could shock the system in that way and realistically do it with fidelity and realistically do it with what we need to do, given people, organization, through attrition and those type of things. And so we've worked through some scenarios, and this is kind of where we've landed at to be a two-year plan with the 5 and 3 that you see there. So I'll turn it back to Matt here.
Yeah, so Les did a nice job of talking about there'd be a couple of reasons you'd want to take the one, one-shot approach, right? Just like you said, if you don't do that, then you really have a hard time ever dating yourself out. You're facing perpetual budget cuts year after year, right? And so you need to get the expenditures out of the system so those expenses don't compound and you don't live in a continual cut scenario. The challenge for us about doing that in a one-year timeframe is not only the size, is also just the volume of people that we have funded by some of the positions that are still going to need homes, right? So even if people move out of the system and we don't replace certain positions because they retire, they resign, they move out of the area, whatever you have, we still have people in some categorical funded positions like ESSR that we would need to assign back to those potential spots, unless we're going to employ some strategies that we'll talk to you about here in a little bit. So that's part of the challenge is really how many people will vacate our system and how much and how deep can we cut in a one-year time period? Our initial read on that is I don't think you can do it all at once. I just, I think it'll take some pretty drastic measures, but you guys may look at this and say, we want you to explore that. We want you to take a look at it. What we've assumed here is 5 million this year, 3 million this year. The other reason for that is because of some of the crazy talk going around about what SSA could be if that variable gets switched from a 1.5% to a 4 or 5% because they want us to be quiet about vouchers, and this is the way they're going to push it through the state of Iowa, that'll change our bottom line quite a bit, right? And maybe it does create a $5 million scenario where we can make the whole cut at once. And so I think as these variables get figured out, it helps inform what we're going to do. The other variable, you know, we've put out an aggressive early retirement package. Once we know how many people take advantage of early retirement, we know how much volume we have created in the system, right? How much space we've created in the system to do that. And so this isn't a finalized document by any means, but we think our first initial read on this is that it probably makes sense that we're in somewhat of a two-year scenario, knowing that we want to try to do as much as we can here, but realistically, we may not be able to make the whole adjustment in this one budget cycle. The other thing we have out there is we know that we've partnered with the Nolte Icon Academy. If we got 100 students that all tuitioned into the district, that's another revenue generator for us, right? That's going to change some of this. The problem is we can't build our budget on that until we know that the kids are actually here paying tuition. So that's another one that's, it's out there, could be a great thing, but until it materializes, we can't in good faith build that into our budget. So Les did a nice job. The real thing is just trying to think about, okay, what our authority is, what our expenditures are, and then what are we missing? You know, how big is the gap? And that's, that's the gap. And that's where we have to get to. And it's really generated off of that enrollment piece. You can imagine if you were able to dump a 280 in here instead of a 44, how much different the equation would be, right? And so again, I think as people start to have the conversation with us about how we're here, we have to remind them, you know, we're in a different enrollment environment than we've been in for the last 20 years. And that's how long that chart was, 20-year history of doing that, right? And so this is a, this is a very new phenomenon for the district in that way. But I think with that information, I want you guys to respond to that if you think we're thinking about it right, or what other detail we could provide to you. The other thing I would ask you to think about is what I think you should ask us to do, or what we would suggest you ask us to do, is to go look at now some potential budget reduction strategies. And to start with the idea that we don't want to do reductions in force if possible, and that we don't want to try to cut student programming if we can avoid it. And so what are the strategies we can use without going to those two things first? It's, and I don't want to take it off the table that we're going to be able to avoid those things totally, but I think that's the starting point for us, that that's really what we have to look at first. And then how much of the five million or three million number can we get to looking at those other strategies? And that that's what we would report out to you in the operations committee meeting next month. Yeah. So with that, we'll kind of turn it over to you guys from there and see if we can kind of coalesce on an approach.
So I'm looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four column. Hand out here and going down to the coast of the bottom, the unspent balance amount is four billion, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand one forty-one. Is that the unspent balance even with that five million dollar?
That's with the five million dollar cut. That's what would get us to basically reflect the unspent balance that we're operating on this year. So this year we have an unspent balance of four-eight and we have the two point three percent for the ratio. So if we wanted to stay something similar next year, we would have to make a five million dollar cut to do that. If you make an eight million dollar cut this year, that gets a lot better. But the other thing, remember, we're moving people out of ESAR-funded positions, right? And so that's why the challenge of when Les was talking about, he said, hey, we're probably going to have to look at this in a couple of years. He was right, right? I just think that's a lot for us to try to take on in one year. And I'm not sure we'd have enough space to do that. So easy answer is yes, Charlie.
Another question in that is to do something in the next two year or in the twenty-three, twenty-four to resolve this issue or help resolve it anyway. And I'm going to have to have parents calling me continuously those two years saying, why is the class size in my school twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, so.
Did you say twenty-four?
Thirty-five. Thirty-five. Say that to them, Governor.
So that's why we started with, okay, what are the strategy? You know, that's why I think what we owe you back is what are the strategies and what's that going to mean? We know really, when I showed you where we put those ESAR dollars, it was a class size reduction. So we're not going to be doing class size reduction. So you're right, you're going to have some larger class sizes, not only at the elementary, but at the secondary. Our dollars are in our people. And so it is going to affect our teaching staff. It's going to affect the overall amount of teachers we have.
Maybe instead of focusing on dollars, we should be focusing on classrooms.
What do you mean?
Yeah, tell me more. What do you mean there?
Well, instead of focusing on on these numbers, I should be trying to figure out what's a good approach for teachers that we have available to be distributed among the students we have.
Yeah, you're wanting to get to the next conversation, I think, right?
Well, firstly, to me, that's a critical conversation.
Yeah, it is. You're right. And I think, you know, the other thing is we're trying to start this conversation with you very early. That's why tonight is basic substance about, here's the budget outlook. Now we need to start the conversations, just like you're alluding to Charlie about now what does this mean? What is this going to start to look like? What we didn't want to do is wait till after December, take a two-week break and then welcome you back in January and say, guess what? We want to start to get some of these things formulated and out there and create some awareness. I mean, we've already implemented somewhat of a hiring freeze where for positions that aren't critical.
We've already started a class size increase.
No, no, not a class size increase, a hiring freeze for what I would say is support positions. So like we had a grow your own coordinator out there. We had a safety and security coordinator, care assessment coordinator. We're not hiring those right now, right? We shouldn't be in the position of hiring those. Our classrooms, we're fully staffed on the teaching end. Nick might tell me there's one or two that are out there. But no, we're not reducing teachers at this point. What I'm saying is any other positions that aren't critical in that way to providing direct services to students, we put a hold on.
Those positions are small.
Yeah, but it's still we are counting to our bottom line because when you add it together, I mean, I think.
So a quarter million dollars if you take those three jobs.
Yeah.
Three teaching positions.
Yeah, exactly. So that's three teaching positions. So I think again, it's, I mean, do you guys agree with the approach of the we don't want to jump to looking just straight at reductions in force and cuts to student programs? You'd like to know what are the other options out there? And now some of that is going to impact student programming, but it's not necessarily cutting student programming. And so I'm kind of finessing the words there with you a little bit. But one of what Charlie's asking is, yeah, that's going to affect elementary RAM. That will bring you back a different elementary RAM model. Will bring you back what secondary reduction would look like. What would be a potential administrator cut, right? What would be a shift in our TLC philosophy? I mean, those are ideas and I don't want anybody to run with those yet tonight. But those are the things that are going to come to mind that are reality things for us that we'll have to look at and how much savings do they create, right? I mean, you guys know from the heat map there about how efficient we are in the administrator and everybody's going to want central office administrators cut right away, right? And so as you go through this process, you're going to have to think about the things that probably feel good and create some political will. And then you're also going to have to measure the size of this and about where volume of our expenses are and what's actually going to get us to the number. And both of those things are important. I mean, we can't do one without the other. I mean, we have to actually hit the number and you have to do things that are meaningful to people too. They say, you know, there's some some wide scope impact to this process.
Yeah, one thing I just want to caution is we throw out these crazy numbers and if the state wants to buy us off a voucher, if that were to happen, one thing I think we know will happen is a major tax cut, which means those revenues aren't going to be in the state of Iowa after this year. So even if we get a bump this year, we have to be cautious and that's that's it.
Yeah, this year is the only year. I mean, JP's exaggerate. The revenues aren't going to be there after this year.
Or just to be smart, that's going to last us. Because after that, especially if vouchers go through, then we're just in an old. There we go. Now we have a whole other problem. And so it's, I don't want to get.
Yeah.
So JP, to your point that you're making, Les and Matt and I were side barring, that line at the very bottom, right, the projected expenditure grew three. That's what we are anticipating. Our expenditures are going to grow year after year. Even though we're losing students and we don't know what SSA is going to be, that's how Les built that budget. So to your point, even if we get five percent next year, we can't let that balloon. And so and so you see that, especially if it's zero, zero, zero after that, because it is one time. And so we do figure that into it, but we're going with that kind of being projected as our increased.
So if you get free, Brady here, like.
Well, right. It's kind of weird.
I haven't gotten one for the COVID stipends.
Remember those COVID stipends, nation.
As we think about things like one-term payments as opposed to percentages, I think it's worth just planting that seed that we're, you know, one, you make people feel good right now for some for some hard times. And then we as an organization don't carry that forward necessarily as we can get creative. I'm not trying to bargain COVID, you can understand. I, you know, we just probably have to get creative even if we see something we normally we get excited about.
We have to know what's ahead, right?
Yeah, your twelve-year SSA average is one point eight six.
Yeah. And you're not, I don't think you're bargaining in public, but it's a good statement to make because after we do this as a group, we do have to bargain in the spring with all five of our negotiating groups and our meeting confer teams. And so we do have to take that into consideration, what that's going to look like and how do you account for some of those pieces as well? And so having Brady at the table is helpful and the transparency piece of it.
And obviously, I know ISE is fully aware of the landscape.
But as we look at it, there's those variables too of what happens when we get into negotiation.
I have some questions.
Yeah, you're fine.
Way to circle back to when we were in the question period. First of all, does Nolte have a date on when they expect to finalize their enrollment numbers? Just so that we know.
This first year, they don't think they'll have final numbers until late in the spring. They're going to open up the application window early in the spring. So they think they'll have supplementary efforts, but they won't have anything final until.
And then the five million dollar number in twenty-three, twenty-four that I've that I've circled, I appreciate the early retirement package, everybody, and I think it's a great package. It's very generous. But my understanding is that we're paying eighty-five percent or a hundred percent of the salary if they retire this year for next year. So we wouldn't expect to, I mean, what type of savings are we going to realize from early retirement from year one? Is that more of what we're going to realize in year two? My question is, can we really expect to save a lot of money in year one, that five million dollars with our early retirement? Or do we need to look at other places to find that?
Do you want to explain to them where the payout comes from? And then also the difference between if we replace the position versus if we don't replace it at all?
So a couple of layers there before Leslie gets into the numbers. We do think we'll see some benefit from it this year because the only folks that could take the packages here and teach next year do not become eligible for the package until after July one, right? So the vast majority of people are eligible, over a hundred certified staff members, about ninety-one that are currently being paid out of the general fund would be eligible this year and we need to take it this year. Now, based on what we've done in the past, our return, we would be very happy if that return was over thirty to thirty-five of those folks. When we did this back in two thousand eighteen, we had over two hundred people eligible and about fifty-five staff members, certified staff members taken. So we're not hanging our hat on ninety people taking it. There is some return, even if we replace those people, Les can give you those numbers. But this goes into what Matt was saying earlier, is that we have other folks in the organization that are going to find themselves in FTE positions that are no longer funded. And so as much as creating cost savings, this is also creating FTE capacity for us. And so it's this it's this balancing act that we need to reduce people out of the system because we also have people coming into the system, Lisa. And so even if there's not a immediate windfall of financial gain this year, what it will help alleviate is making sure that we have some spots available to move some folks over to help bring that down this year. So as we get into the next year, we can continue to see that attrition to get us that number where.
And I heard Eliza mentioned, but like where does the where does the payout money come from?
Oh, that's the part, the management.
Management. So that doesn't impact our bottom line.
And all that comes from the management funds. So even the sick days can come from the management.
And the health insurance.
Yeah, I would, I'll just say I appreciate the district. Les, one for just getting this out in front of everybody this early. I mean, I've been around long enough to have several budget cuts under my belt and they're never, you know, they're not easier fun, obviously. But the ones that don't go well, the ones that hit you in the spring and then people who should have been paying attention and weren't all of a sudden think, what in the world am I going to do with everyone mobilizing their coalitions, their constituencies? And it's really, JP, you look through, they're messy and they're elusive. So I appreciate that we're doing this, you know, straight away. And the retirement package is, I think it's unprecedented. I mean, any, it really, like any district would look at it and employees would just go, oh, my goodness, gracious, I can't believe that's the opportunity that people who are eligible get to take advantage of hopefully if that works for them because it's a huge reward and service that we're in the system. So I mean, that, I mean, we'll talk to people a lot. There's a meeting on Thursday, I would say. If we're able to do it, you know.
If you care about the children.
The point I want to go back to is Brady said twelve-year SSA average one point eight six. I mean, I know that people are somewhat tired about hearing the narrative about underfunded public schools, but it does have a consequence at some point. Our district has been able to avoid some of those consequences again because of a growing enrollment. We don't have growing enrollment right now to the level of what we've seen, right? And so I'm going to sound like a broken drum or I don't know if that's the right expression. Broken record. Thank you. There we go. It's getting late. It's eight-thirty. Broken record. There we go. But that's what I think we're going to have to reiterate to people, right? Because they're going to be frustrated with us. They're going to look for somebody to blame about why this is here. But really, I mean, it's those three things outlined to you at the beginning. I mean, the historical underfunding has an impact. We don't have our buffer of the extreme enrollment that we have any that we've been used to having and the ESAR dollars have to come off. And I don't think we'd do that differently. We owed it to our kids to put those dollars closest to the kids and that was into our people. And now we have to work out of that and we're dealing with a new challenge around enrollment that isn't creating the buffer it did for the low SSA that we were being subjected to. And this is what other people in the state have had to be working through when they've been in declining enrollment districts, right? And we're still basically in a decline from the two hundred and eighty student loss that we had. We just didn't feel it till right now because we had the buffer of the ESAR dollars. That now that security blanket's being taken away. So I just think it's important for us to also stay on message with that, right? Because that'll be something that is the more consistently we can help people understand the why behind this challenge, it's not going to make them feel any better about the cut, but it's going to make them understand the reason to need to do a cut, right? We're still going to have people that advocate against whatever strategy we decide to employ that way. That'll be the reality.
Sorry. I think that's important because, you know, it's, I have sort of, I have bifurcated emotions about this. One is just rage for the situation we've been placed in by state funding, manhood funding. Like you said, a decade of it and everybody who's coming and it's getting worse and worse and worse. Here we are and it stinks. So there's that white rage over here. But the other part of me is like, but you know, we've got what it takes to make this district function. We're just going to have to figure out how to do it. So like, I don't want to, I think that's why the messaging is important, right? Especially as we're facing the voucher stuff. I mean, JP, what you said really resonates. It's like, we don't have a choice of doing, of making a deal with the devil, but that's what it feels like. I mean, give us higher SSA so that you can pass vouchers. Well, we do live in a town that has a private school and there will be people, big people that use it. I mean, we could lose enrollment just for those vouchers. We did such a good job of practicing. We're real close on that last one, man. Real close. But I think, I do think it is so important to, I mean, I'm going to say get ahead of it. Get ahead of the messaging. I think this is something the board, we're going to, we're going to need to do messaging about this situation we're in. And it can't be hosed. It has to be, we got hosed in this way. And guess what we're going to do? We're going to, we're going to figure out what comes next because we're still going to be the best school you can come to in the area. It's not going to be Regina. It's going to be here. So that's the kind of thing we have to work through as we're looking at what strategies we employ. To Lisa's point, I'm also concerned about whether we can make all this add-on to five million dollars. And I know everyone's concerned about it. So you guys are going to give us, you know, take a stab at that and you'll come back to us and tell us what it looks like. And then if we have to have, you know, really difficult conversations to get to that five million, then we have them. I think that you warned us that that's a possibility. So I, I want to know what you guys can come up with. I understand why we would do the five million. And that good five million and then three million? I think that that's a sensible way of doing it. And hopefully you can come up with an equation that makes that work.
Sorry, part of what we're saying is we might show you how to get to the eight over the two years as well, right? And so that's some of what we started talking about is not just how to get to the five is also saying, okay, well, if we have to get to eight, you know, some of the strategies you could put in place this year could help, you know, improve the situation for next year as well. So that's probably just a clarifier to say. But I agree with Mary Kate. Part of this with what I was kind of highlighting with the strategic plan is we still have to continue to tell people why we're the best, right? And how we're going to still achieve our goals, how we're still going to do this, that we've got a handle on this, that we can be firm and confident in our approach. The only thing again, that's a surprise is the enrollment, right? The other stuff we all knew, right? We knew the ESAR dollars. We knew a potential cut before that. We knew the historical underfunding. The enrollment's not there, right? And so it means we have less kids. We're not going to have as many, be able to have as many people. And then how are we going to pull that off?
I'm still starting with how I'm looking at no increase in enrollment over the next five years. But in the last ten years, there have been periods where enrollment has increased substantially on the average. So how are we, what's a story I can bring to people about why have I looked for no enrollment?
Well, if I can, it's because of our deteriorating underfunded public schools. It's because Iowa is passing laws to ban transgender girls to participate. I mean, it's all of these social things are driving people out of the state. People are not coming here to raise families.
Well, the best facts.
The birth rates.
The best facts you can give them will be the enrollment report, Charlie.
People are not having kids in Iowa at the rate they were five, eight years ago.
It's truly not unique to just K through twelve education. I mean, this is an issue that we are facing, I would really say K through college. I mean, the birth rate is a huge part of it. It's just folks are not having, have kids. If you're listening, I'm just joking. We just don't have the bodies. And it's, it's just historic that people are starting families a lot later. People are choosing not to have kids for whatever reason. And that impacts K through twelve situations and our funding expectations. Because you have to remember, some of these projections were done at a time where we were seeing high birth rates. We were seeing things explode, that we had more kids come into our district that we could find chairs for. And that's, that trend has shifted as our world has changed.
And so we have to contemplate a conservative number, to use your term. That's the other reason. When people ask you, it's because we have to be conservative with the numbers. And you, I thought you proved your own point when you said the numbers are unpredictable. Exactly. That's why we put conservative numbers.
I don't disagree with that.
Then I don't, I don't understand.
I think the best thing you'll be able to show people will be those projections we show you because that's what we'll have to base some of our projections on. That'll be the best data we have. We know right now our, our young student classes are closer to a thousand than they are eleven hundred, which already signals to us, we're going to have less students in the system, right? We're used to eleven hundreds. We're getting to thousands now at the early grade levels. You saw a preschool number in here where Les said we had less students, right? That's not because people aren't choosing our preschool. That's because we have less students, right? We're expanding our preschool offerings, but we just have fewer young kids. But the best data and the facts you will be able to give them, I think, are those enrollment projections. And I cited a couple of statistics to you early on, right? The state's down six thousand kids. The AEA is down a thousand kids, right? I mean, we're down a hundred and thirty of those students still from pre-pandemic. And that's, that's the facts right there, right? And so when people ask you, how do you project that out? I mean, I think those are the things we have to go to. And so hopefully in December, when we have that work session, we'll have those enrollment projections and that can give you some good confidence that that's the assumptions we can start to build into here. Because otherwise, yeah, I mean, seventy-five is somewhat of a guess based on the early indicators we've seen out of those. But we'd like to have that more solid. And yeah, we'd love to show you a hundred students in those next two years if we could. But if the birth rates aren't there and the housing patterns aren't there.
I'm fine with showing numbers that we have that are mixed. It's fairly solid evidence.
Yep. And that's what we'll hope to give you. We know that, we knew that was a necessary part two years ago when we started looking at it minus 287. We're like, holy cow, what are we going to do here? We're going to have to get some new projections.
You get pushback. I mean, I was trying to explain it to my own husband. He's like, people don't just disappear. This isn't Spinal Tap. But they are disappearing. There's not.
And here's the most powerful demonstrator of that, right? Is that we're now the third largest district.
Yeah.
So we leapfrogged over two other districts. We're larger than them and we're down 130 students. So we're missing 130 kids and there are other districts that are missing even more. So I, and it's not Spinal, but like this is a statewide issue and they're just, the kids are not here.
I guess that, to me, that defines, that defines really what our task is over the next two to four years, which is to.
Having kids. And she's thinking about it.
No, I've done my, I've done my part.
Some kind of campaign that's real subtle. You know what I'm saying? It's like some subtle political campaign that encourages people to have appropriate.
We've got to have the facts and the data that gives us some confidence. And I think that makes sense, Charlie.
We've got to have people in Des Moines crafting statewide policies that make Iowa an attractive place to live.
Set the ambition.
Yeah. And economic development and good job, like that's what people in Des Moines need to do in order to solve this problem statewide.
Man, I want to talk to the election allegation here.
We're an aging state and the truth is, most places in the state have had to deal with this forever. I mean, where I grew up, my school doesn't exist. And now you have, you know, is it R.iva or Recur from Manila? I mean, you just have, and this has been going on forever. It's, I, it, one thing might be, it's just trying to catch up to urban areas. What's been going on in the state for decades, which is young people don't stay. Our, we have an aging population. It's for whatever reason, we can say it's not attractive for young people to move to Iowa and move families. That's a known and we, we've been sheltered from it in, in this district. And so some of this might just be, it's, it's catching up to us, what's been happening across Iowa. You can't find very many small schools anymore because of this declining enrollment. Exactly what all of these schools close is declining enrollment. They couldn't afford to have a science, a language arts, social studies and a math teacher in their high schools and they had to close. And so it, so we're, you know, we're still in a bubble. You know, we, we can do some things. We can come out of this. You know, the last one, this is where I'm a little concerned or a lot concerned. The last one was $6 million. And this is eight. So it's more. And so, and with more means we're that many years down the line, which means everything is more expensive than it was four years ago. But we're going to do it. And we're going to do it with the least impact to our kids as possible.
And I think that's important that our team will bring to us hopefully recommendations that keep us as far as waiting classrooms as we can until we see that might be our last resort. Because like Dickie said, we sat through $6 million cut and that was not fun. And so it's not going to be fun. It's going to be difficult decisions and we will get calls once we start realizing what tough decisions we will have to make. But I think as a board and working with our administration, we have to understand that we're doing what we can do to keep our kids at the forefront and provide them with what we know will still be the better education for them. And do our best to be supportive of that because it, it will get tough. So I just want folks around the table to know that this isn't going to be a one and done. We're going to start hearing from lots of people. And before we get on that sort of soapbox or get fooled with some very compelling conversations, we have to keep in mind what our endgame is.
The unknown is, is the worst part. And that's why it's so important to start to express this girl.
I have to know the way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think maybe another key point is, I thought hopefully we've driven home that our budget is, the resources are driven by the number of students and the amount the state provides per student, right? We're going to get those people who say, go out and raise funds for the school district, okay? That's, that's not the reality here. The reality is control of expenditures. And so that's where you're seeing this. You know, the NLT will be nice if that comes through, right? That's on the revenue side. But that's not, that's not a given at this point in time. And that could create some additional expenditures if we need some more staffing. So that's not necessarily all gravy. But, so my point is, is that the control mechanism that has to be in place is the expenditure side of our organization to come out of this long-term. And while that's the most painful approach, that's the realistic and the practical approach that we have to take as a group.
And I want to clarify, NLT, much like maybe a 5% SSA, NLT is more like a one-time bump, right? Like, I mean, we get 100 students of growth one year.
No, not necessarily. That's the, that's the idea about why the enrollment is so important, right? If you have the students, then you count them every year moving forward too, right? So they're new into the system, so you get the one-year bump. But then you're factoring $7,000 on that many more students each year going forward.
If it's the same number, we're not going to see growth from it.
They're anticipating, they think that form, they'd be about 300.
I think we should not consider that a factor at all.
It's not something we can.
Just, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm reluctant to even have it at the table. That is a, that is a private thing that's happening and we don't really know. Well, we partnered with them, so it's a private-public partnership. But we can't force it to happen.
That's right.
That's what I mean. And we don't really have control over whether it happens.
But even, my point is, even if it happens and they bring 150 kids in this year. If they only bring 150 kids, it's not a source of long-term growth. They're not, we're not going to be adding growth from them.
But those dollars get added each year, each column.
Yes. No, no, they do. But one of the things we're talking about is how do we grow enrollment? We cannot, like, there's no way NLT is a sustaining growth, source of growing student enrollment.
Yeah, that's why we just can't. Mary Kate is probably not going to bring it to you.
Yeah. Although we do have our online program, which I think is a selling point. And that could be a selling point across the state. Because you could be in Sioux City and enroll in our online program.
But I want, that's something that I want to have data on as we look at this.
I'm just saying it's a possibility.
And so this is what I don't want us to get into tonight, is the, the different items, right? Because that's to Ruthina's point, right? And every cut you make is going to have an interest group behind it, right? That's going to advocate. And so we have to be careful about how soon we start talking about those things, how legitimate those savings are, if it's a benefit or if it's a cut, right? And so again, we don't want to elicit fear in people. We want to be real with people. We want to be transparent. But I think the first thing we want to do is, I mean, if you guys are in alignment with that, look at those, those kind of guardrails for right now and say, how far does that get us? And then we're going to have to get into some other conversations, I think, is legitimate truth over the course of the next couple of years. But first we should look at those. And it is, I mean, it was good we started early so that we can deliberately have the conversation about what things would be up for consideration, right? So we can kind of have a holistic one. The problem will be if we start talking about individual pieces, then of course you guys will hear from those people the loudest and, and first with that conversation. And so that's where we'll want to have good consensus or the best alignment we can from a, from a team perspective here. So that when we make hard decisions, you know, that's not their, they're picking you off individually in some way. So it'll strain, yeah.
Can you preview what you would see in December then, or, or the next time we talk about this? I mean, do you anticipate bringing us like a spreadsheet of potential cuts in the cost savings or bigger ideas?
But yeah, you're going to see some projected savings that we think we can get from certain strategies. So we will tell you, hey, this is a strategy we think we could do and this is the savings it'll generate. The complicating piece I'll tell you now will be what Chase was talking about before, is that it may feel like a savings year, but only if we can get the people into positions or only if we can get so many positions vacated. Because for every categorical funded, you know, relief we might create, we're going to have to now have a general funded position for that person. And the easiest way to think about that is if somebody's funded ESTR wise and they're not taking their retirement, we owe them a home currently, unless we're going to do something different, unless we're going to employ a different strategy. So we got to get that person into the general fund. And first of all, we have to create enough spots. Well, we got to create enough spots to create budget reduction room too, not just get them a home. So that'll be part of the complicating, part of the conversation in December. But yeah, you'll see strategies and you'll see dollar amounts.
And that one, go ahead.
Well, since one of the smart strategies employed on the early retirement is that the buyback of up to 60, or, I'm not negotiating for 60, 20.
Look at him, he's already in negotiations.
The 20, the 20 sick leave days is that you have to notify the district by December 22nd. So that's just, it gives you that assurance of like, okay, you're going to, you're going to know more. And the 12 year is, is 1.90. So I, it's not 1.86.
You forgot 0.04.
Yeah, so it's much, much better than I.
So much better. It makes me feel great.
Thank you.
I would just ask that as you do prepare that information, that's a, that was a very good question because it helps me. Please be as blunt as possible with us when you explain what you've now said twice about finding homes for people or not replacing them or letting them go. I mean, I want us to use the words that make sense to those of us that aren't in an education bubble. Because we need to be really matter of fact about what the plan might be at our next meeting. So like, I'm going to need you to just say it like you would to a businessperson, right? Because that's the language I understand better. So as you give us that layout, that'll be very helpful.
And you're going to do that at the December Ops Committee meeting. That's, that's the next step moving forward. So maybe I don't bring cookies, I bring like shots.
We have a different policy. We may be in a different location. And I know Ruthina is trying to wrap up. Charlie, what they're talking about will also let us present the information in a way that you were thinking about earlier. We're talking about classrooms and talking about people. When we present that, we will tie it to positions, tie it to those numbers. And so Charlie, that'll help frame what you were saying earlier. That's part of what.
Yeah, that's going to happen. So when we say, just a couple of things ahead of time, reduction in force, that would mean you don't have a job, right? It means that we're giving you a pink slip and we no longer need your services, right? And so that's the thing we want to avoid there. So when I'm kind of saying find a home for you would be, well, we've offered these people contracts. There's kind of an assumption they would be welcome back the next year and that we would have a home for them or a job for them. Well, reduction in force would be, no, we tell that person now, you don't have a job expectation. So we'd like to start with that, the concept of that we don't have to do that. I think we also need to be real that we need to see if that's first possible.
Yeah.
Years.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So that sounds good. Given it sounds like we're at the end, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will do adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?